Good evening. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for May 1st, 2019 in room G07 at 7:15 PM. This meeting is being audio and video recorded per the open meeting laws of the state of Massachusetts. Tonight we have three public hearings and one continuation. At 7 o'clock we have Schedule 273 Dedham Street for a special permit with regard to bylaw F7E for parking in the front of a commercial building in the commercial C1 through C4 district. At this time, who will be speaking for the folks at 269?
I'm Lisa Whalen, attorney for the applicants. This is Tim O'Toole and Kurt Malouf for my clients.
Welcome.
Welcome.
And Joe, would you please, the public hearing?
Yeah, so notice hereby given in accordance with Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws and any and all amendments thereto that a public hearing will be held by the zoning Board of Appeals in room 124, well actually, they still say room?
G07.
Room G. G7.
G7, at the Norfolk Municipal Building on Wednesday, May 1st, 2019 for the following application. 269 Dedham Street LLC at 7:00 PM for a special permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48, Section 9 as amended, and Section F7E of the Norfolk zoning bylaws to allow parking located in the front yard of a proposed commercial building. Property is located at 273 Dedham Street, assesses map 18, Lot 82, Lot 12, and is in the C1 zoning district.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good evening. Thank you. So, as you know, I think we have been going through site plan approval with the planning board, and we're hoping to get a vote and a decision tonight. The proposed development that you see on the plan is a 10,000 square foot commercial building located on what is currently vacant land off on Dedham Street. As you know, the applicant has also owned the adjacent property 269 Dedham Street, which has an existing commercial building. So, it's going to be quite an improvement in that area, which is really just vacant, unused, undeveloped land. So, the reason we are seeking the special permit tonight is for the parking in the front of the building, and as you can see, we've got a couple of handicap spots in the front there, and because of the presence of the wetlands along the side of the property, you know, we weren't able to put any of the parking, well, a few parking spaces in the back and along the side, but in order to meet the minimum parking requirements and the handicapped access, we needed to put several of the parking spaces in the front of the building.
Do you want to point out those parking spaces, because it looks like you've got some in the front and some on the left side, correct? So you can identify them.
You can press the green button.
Okay.
It's not. No, it's shown here, but it's not.
Yeah.
Well, she's probably not used to it.
I am not.
You can come up here if you want.
Okay.
Might be easier for you. I'll move to one side when you come.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Right, so this is the handicap spot, which needs to be easily accessible to the front entrances of the building. We've got five spaces here as well, and there's another handicap spot here, since there will be two different doorways, and they need to be adjacent to the doorways. We've got some parking on the side here. There's some bay areas in the back, and these spaces to the, of each side of the bay door will be for cars that are coming in and out of the bay inspection area. And, as you can see, because of the wetlands in the back here, and in order to allow for emergency vehicular access for the fire and emergency vehicles, we weren't able to put any parking in the back.
Okay. So how many spaces are you looking for in total in the front of the building?
Seven, five, and these are the two handicap spots.
Okay. Okay, and how many, and then you've got some along the left side here?
Yeah, we've got 21, and then four and two over there.
Okay. And I don't think the board knows what is going in this building. They're not familiar probably with what's going in the building.
Sure, so Mitch's, as you know, used to be in this building here, which is now occupied by Carvana. So, at this point, Kurt Malouf has a couple of different businesses. One is Northeast Tractor, which is his lawn and garden equipment company, which was also prior, in this building, prior to Carvana occupying it. And then he also has a used car and auto repair business that he's relocated to Walpole while we're constructing this building. So, it's the intent to have him move in to one portion of the building, and then we've got a couple of extra spots for commercial tenants. So we're hoping to keep Kurt in town, because he's got a loyal following of customers in town, and also bring a couple of new businesses in.
Okay, great, okay, great, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I see Lot 45, which is self-explain what you're talking about, Lot 2, and then there's also Lot 3. I'm just, are they now adjoined together? Are they?
So Lots 2 and 3 are 269 Dedham Street. There are actually four separate parcels, 2 and 3, which have 269, the building that is known as 269 Dedham Street, and Lots 4 and 5. We actually submitted an A&R plan as part of the site plan review process to combine Lots 4 and 5, since the building will be on both of those parcels. So Lots 2 and 3 will remain separately described lots, but 4 and 5 will become a new single lot, Lot 45, after the A&R approval.
Which, okay, that makes sense for Lot 4.
Yeah.
Okay, and the next question is the wetlands delineation. Is that the curly line that goes around? I see where the flood line is, but what's the wetlands delineation? Is that this line right here?
I believe so, if our engineer was hearing the...
I think that's the level.
The green one?
I think that's the hundred-foot buffer.
The curly one. That's the true line.
The hundred-foot buffer, yeah. The hundred-foot buffer, I believe, is the curly line.
Oh, the curly line is a...
So we're not going to be constructing within the wetland, but...
That's the buffer line.
Yes.
Okay.
But there will be activities, and we're before the Concom as well, and awaiting their approval.
No, this, this line is labeled as the hundred-foot buffer. See that? That's the 50-foot buffer zone. Okay. I would think, I don't see it. Those look like what the level of lines do, which would correspond to that buffer zone. I don't have a scale on it. It looks like 50 feet.
Well, they said that they couldn't put parking in this area because it was in wetlands.
No, the buffer zone is that 100-foot around the building, so we kept the building within the 100-foot buffer line that he's referring to.
Okay.
Because we tried to move it certain ways and angle it in order to keep it within that 100-foot. That's why we have to have the parking in the front to keep it within that 100-foot. That's, that line in the back is just a delineation of where the wetlands begin. It kind of drops off.
That's, that's the 50-foot line, right?
There's a 50 and a 100 in there.
That was the 100 appears to go right through the building.
I don't, I don't, there's a 100 right there.
This is, the 100 is this line right here?
Okay.
Goes like right through the building, because that's what this shows here, that's the 100-foot buffer zone.
Do you want to come and talk to that? Here.
Do you want to go get Jim?
Oh, yeah, I'm right now. I'll text him here.
Our engineer's upstairs waiting for the planning board, so we can have him come down and give you a better...
And the other question, while we're waiting for him, it says display area. What are the things that would be in the display area?
The lawn and garden equipment, and used cars as well. We've got a special permit currently to sell used cars in the class.
The display area, if you remember, if you ever come by, there's a little left in front of that big fence. So we've got to move it away from the road. That's why they designated that area to pull it back from the road, so it's not so close.
Okay.
I think you also, you have a fence going up there as well, or there? I know at one point I heard two proposals about a fence.
There's a fence already there.
There's already a fence?
There's already a fence there, but some of that fence we were coming down, we'll be doing a post and rail on my side, but the Carvana side will keep their fence.
Yeah, and I believe there are going to be a lot of native plantings as well going in.
But from the street, you'll see the post and rail fence, and you'll see your display of used cars plus the lawn equipment.
Yeah, we're a Massey Ferguson deal, as we have a franchise. That's mainly what we'll be displaying, is the factors. Everything's new that we put out there.
Is that the broken chair?
That's the broken chair.
I didn't know it was back to the table, I'm sorry.
The 50, you're absolutely correct. The 50, the entire building is outside of it. Unless they're mislabeled, and this is 100 and this is 150.
Well, it doesn't talk to that, because...
No, he just wants to see it anyway. Usually the squiggly line is the true line.
Say again.
So usually, like, the land's the squiggly line, not black squiggly line, the true line.
Yeah, but we've seen it also used.
That wouldn't make sense, because the tree line would be in front of the display area. You wouldn't be able to see it from the road.
Well, it's not labeled, so.
We'll get Jim to come down and clarify that. Is there some other questions for the applicant with regard to the plan? Do you have two, you have two spaces down on this corner, right? One handicap, and one, right, those spaces, and what's it going to be? Okay. So it's a total of 5, 7, and 2? Yeah.
Yes.
Seven spaces, 5 and 2.
Total of 18 of them.
And two of them are handicapped.
And, you know, obviously, since the entrances will be in the front of the building, it seems to make more sense to have the handicap spots close to the entrances of the building instead of in the back, or on the side, obviously, so they don't have to traverse the parking line.
Do you have a picture up there of the building itself? Is that? Didn't I see that?
In a minute, I will.
Is there a Concom? See the shot?
No, May 8th, next week. This is the full plan set.
See if there's a picture in it. The building, for some reason, I thought a picture of the building.
Yeah, there are architect renderings of it.
Yeah. And I see you have a traffic pattern that basically is a kind of a circular.
Don, this is the, I pulled this off the website.
Okay. Here he comes.
Jim?
The location of the wetland buffers?
I guess on the map, we're getting, we got some questions with regard to the buffer zones. If you could explain those.
Sure.
And I think Don was looking, we were looking at this, where you had the 100-foot and the 50-foot buffer.
Right, those are the buffers to the BBW. Those are the 50 and 100-foot buffers to the wetland. It goes up here and around there, so, and this is...
What's that squirrely line going?
This here?
Yes.
That's the existing tree line.
Oh, okay. Okay.
All right, and then we do have the riparian setbacks. You can see the 100 and the 200-foot to the river, so we're not doing any work within there. It does clip into the existing building, but we're not doing any work within the riparian zone. And the work we are doing within the 50 and 100 is a previously disturbed area, so we're not taking down any more trees or encroaching further into the buffer zone to the wetland.
I guess the question Don had was, it looks like the 100-foot buffer zone goes right through the building?
Yes.
Okay.
The building is entirely outside of the 50, which I believe is a Concom regulation, but the building is allowed within the 100.
Okay.
Great, all right.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
All right. All right, other questions for the applicant? Yeah. So this is F7E of our bylaw that is looking for, which does allow a special permit parking in the front. It's in our C1 through C4 district, so any other questions for, I'll let Bob have a chance to look at that?
Yeah, let's wait, go right ahead.
You're good?
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
No.
All right, Joe, do you want, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes. I'd like to motion that we close the public hearing for 273 Dedham Street for a special permit to allow parking in the front of the yard of a commercial building.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're going to probably try to deliberate this tonight, and maybe we'll let you know tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you for your time.
I'm going to slide this away, so nobody... That's the death chair.
All right. It's 7:30, so...
We asked for, we didn't ask for any public comments.
Say again.
We've got to ask for public comments.
Is anybody here for the public for 273?
I would just like to make one comment, that it's very common in that strip to have the parking out in front of the buildings, that it wouldn't interrogate from anything else out in the neighborhood that's normally there. How's that for a comment?
Very good, that's a good comment. What are you here for?
I'm here for Nine Chestnut.
Denied. All right, take care of that. Next time you won't make any comments, well, no. Come on up.
Do we have a claim, because I brought extras on?
Can I have a question? Where is, before we start the hearing, I just want to know where Nine Chestnut Road is?
It's down, it's behind mics, down that way, down by the loop. Before the registry claim, you come in from Bear Lake Ave, that you take Birch, and then it's the last, the last street there, and you were four of the old camp last there that was 40, like, 30 feet wide.
Okay.
I have to recopy.
We have three copies, I think.
Then I have, do you have the architectural renderings as well?
We do?
I think we have everything.
Some renderings and things?
Great.
Okay.
For the record, I'm Bruce Wilson.
We haven't opened the hearing yet. Denied. You just got used to making comments, right?
I did.
Joe, would you please read into the record the notice of public hearing?
Notice hereby given in accordance with Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws and any and all amendments thereto that a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals in room GL, oh, G7? Good enough. Okay. At the Norfolk Municipal Building on Wednesday, May 1st, 2019 for the following application. GW Site Solutions at 7:10 PM for a special permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48, Section 9 as amended, and Section F4A of the Norfolk zoning bylaws to allow the alteration or enlargement of an existing non-conforming structure which does not violate the setback coverage or height requirements of Section E1B, but does not violate those, that does, excuse me, which does violate the setback coverage height requirements of Section E1B, but does not violate those requirements to a greater extent than the original, than the original structure. Property is located at Nine Chestnut Road, assesses map 12, Lot 62, Lot 52, in the R3 zoning district.
Thank you, Joe. All right, welcome.
Hi, Bruce Wilson with GW Site Solutions. With me tonight is John Sullivan. He will be the builder for the Bakers. The Bakers couldn't make it tonight, but they sent us to present for you.
Come on up. Don't be bashful.
All right, we're looking to expand the existing house with a porch and garage, and then over the porch area, make a master bedroom, and then redo the floor layout up on the, up on the second floor of the building here. It's a two-bedroom house, will have two bedrooms, but will rearrange the layout. If you look through, you can see the different, on the second floor plan and the architectural renderings there. The existing building has several violations according to the new requirement, one being the area, the frontage, circle bylaw, and then all of the, all of the setbacks are closer than the R3 requirement. The plan was originally created in 1927, long before any of the zoning bylaws in town, and it's going to be very typical of any of the, any of the homes on that area would be before your board if they wanted to do any type of additions. I think we've had several, looking at some of the other houses in the, in the neighborhoods, a lot of projects have gone down there recently. The existing building is 12.9 feet off of Chestnut Road. There's a portico on the front of the building, and then at 22.6 on the rear. Our new building would be at 22.4 feet off the street, and then will be 51.8 at the closest point to the rear, which does happen to meet the rear setback. And then our side yard would be at 40.6, again, meeting the side yard requirement. You're allowed to have 25% of impervious cover. Our proposed product would be 19.7 total, with the existing building, the addition, the driveway for the new garage, and the shed that's on the property there. I don't think, you know, rocket science here is pretty straightforward, what we want to try to do, and then again, you know, we're working with a footprint that is less of an impact to the lot than the pre-existing nonconformities. Could boards members have any questions?
I just have a question. From the existing house to Chestnut, I'm looking for the measurement, and I don't...
Oh, the arrow, if you look out into the street, the dimensions...
That's the 17.7.
Well, the 17.7 to the house?
Yes.
And then the 12.9 is to the portico?
Portico, right, but to the house is 17.7.
Yep.
Okay.
And the existing house, you're, you're going to reconfigure the second floor, you said?
Right, they're going to take, they're going to do a new, new floor plan. If you look in your sheet there, you'll see on the second, second floor plan, they're going to take and open up a section of it as like a cathedral down below, and then a little bit of loft area, large walk-in closet, and then the existing bedroom in the back, and then we'll do a master suite over the top of the, over the top of the proposed porch.
And the roof line will stay the same, though, basically, the height of the roof?
It's elevation.
Is there an elevation?
There's elevation due to front left, right.
So it won't be greater than 35 feet?
No, no.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Questions from the board?
I have a question, so I'm just sort of figuring here. So the only real issue here, correct, is that the new, these additions will be, the requirement is what, 50-foot setback from the front, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
And so, and so these are going to be 22.4, 22.5. But they're less than, well, they're greater than the existing of...
Less, less nonconforming than the existing.
Less nonconforming, and so my question really is one of, is it necessary that they're before us?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a special permit, not a variance, a special permit.
Okay.
It's not by right. In other words, not by right. They have to get it with a special permit.
Okay.
Even though they're, they're less noncon, they're, they're less nonconforming, it still is a special permit, so they have to get permission from the zoning board.
Okay.
And the lot next to the one that's Wagner is, that's 40.6 feet, and the requirement there is 25, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And the rear lot, the requirement is 50 or 25?
The rear would be 25.
The rear, rear is 25, on that?
And, and they're...
51.
They're looking at 51.
So there's plenty in that area, and...
Yeah, so the only kind of, if you will, like, the only violation, you know, if you want to, however you want to define, is just, is just porch and garage in proximity to the street, that's really it, right?
To the, to the existing...
Right.
But it's still less of a violation than what is currently attached to it, or will be attached to it.
Have any of the houses been renovated around you yet, or no? Of the Wagner...
The left corner.
Which is...
The Zaccarides and the Phillips have had some work done, and then Brady's to the south.
Okay.
And then...
There's a new house on the corner.
Right, if you go out onto the corner on Birch Road, there's a number of new, new projects there.
Okay. On the existing house, right, we have the 17.7?
Yes.
And the 12... That's, that's changing?
No, that's going to remain.
No, the existing house will stay where it is. He's just showing the setback.
If you look on, if you look on the front elevation?
Right.
There's the, the little portico, and then here's the, the building to see, the only thing they're going to probably do is, is change out the window.
All right, so existing, so as far as meeting the frontage, it's still be 12.9 as it was?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for? Lot coverage is going to be 19%. So what we're really, that is, the addition, the addition as it relates to the front setback?
That's it, that's the whole thing.
Yeah.
Right, okay. As far as lot coverage, though, if 25% is required?
No more than 25%.
Right.
And he's at 19% including, and that includes, you're going to leave the deck and the porch on the other side of the house.
Yep. That's a, that's a total inclusive driveway, porch, deck?
It's actually 19.7.
Yep, that's correct.
Any, any others?
We're going to, is, are you here at all for this project, sir?
No.
Okay, so obviously, there's no, any, no public comment?
Yeah, we, we won't record this.
So any other questions before we close the public hearing? Devin?
Nope.
Bob?
Nope.
Okay. This time, I'd like for a motion to close the public hearing. Joe?
Make a motion that we close the public hearing for Nine Chestnut Road for a special permit to allow the alter, the alteration or enlargement of an existing nonconforming structure which does not violate the setback coverage or height requirements of Section E1B, but does not violate those, that does, excuse me, I did it again, violate the setback coverage or height requirements of Section E1B, but does not violate those requirements to a greater extent than the original structure.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion? The only thing we didn't ask you was the driveway, and is that a well, or is, with this well and septic on this property?
There's a private septic, which is, if you look at it from the street on the right-hand side, and then it's town water.
Okay, so septic's on the right, and it's town water?
Yeah.
Great. And the driveway, is that staying where it is now, or?
That, that will be relocated to the other, where the new garages.
Where the new garages, okay. So come in from there?
Right.
Okay. All right, great, all right.
Thank you.
All those, all right, we seconded it. No more further discussion? All those in favor, close the public hearing?
Aye.
Great, we will try to deliberate this tonight, and Amy will get back to you tomorrow. You can check in with her.
Okay, and then the process, it gets filed with the clerk, and then there's a 21?
Correct.
But once it's filed with the clerk, the clock starts ticking?
The clock strikes.
That was, yeah, that's, that was, that's basically John's question, but I...
So it actually, we close it tonight, Joe will write the decision. It's 20 days from the, 21 days from the decision, so Joe will have to write the decision, and then it will get stamped, and then it's that period of time. So it could be 30 days, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Not to rush Joe.
Better get busy too. Oh, you, you're running out of...
He's running out of here.
I'm leaving, I'm leaving tomorrow for 21 days.[1781.41] I'm leaving tomorrow for twenty-one days.
It doesn't work this way.
Not a good program, huh? All right. Okay, it is seven forty-five. We have thirty-nine Leland Road special permit. Joe, would you mind reading the special permanent application?
Yep.
Okay.
Notice hereby given in accordance with chapter forty-eight of the Massachusetts general laws and any and all amendments thereto, that a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals in room G O seven at the Norfolk municipal building on Wednesday, May first, twenty nineteen for the following application. Martin Pearson at seven twenty P M for a special permit pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty-eight, section nine is amended, and section F four B, excuse me, F four A of the Norfolk zoning bylaws to allow the alteration or enlargement of an existing non-conforming structure, which does violate the setback coverage of the height requirements of section E one B, but does not violate those requirements to a greater extent than the original structure. The property is located at thirty-nine Leland Road, assesses map four, lot eleven, lot thirty-one in the R two zoning district.
Is that you, sir?
Yes, it is.
Come on up.
Thanks, Joe. Okay. I might need to borrow these later.
I know I saw a plan somewhere. Amy, do you have a plan?
It looks like it.
Okay, do you want to talk to the plan for us?
Yeah, we're.
Come on up. They'll make it easier for you.
Existing house there, again, it's too close to the lot lines and the sides. And we're putting a dormer on the back. From the front of the house, it won't look any different. Bridge line is the same, oh, this, well, this is a hundred feet off the street here.
So it's a hundred and six from the street?
Yep.
Okay.
Kingsbury Pond's in the back there. And as you can see, the deck is, let's say twelve feet.
Okay.
Have you been right?
Twelve.
This is twenty, twelve and twenty. We're just putting a simple dormer on the back and turning the roof over the porch. It's there now, part of the house. I'm putting a deck on top of it.
I can just ask, wait, sorry.
Yeah, okay. It's a deck over here.
That's an existing deck.
Is that existing? That's there now?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so you've got an existing deck in back.
Right.
You've got an existing house in the front to the left side here, right?
Right.
Okay. And thosey.
This is the basic, this is the house right here.
Correct. And then the deck is already set, is in the backside there.
Right.
Okay.
What is the difference between that and the base, and the regular house? What's the difference between the one area that's twenty feet and the other area that's eight feet?
It was eighteen house.
What's the difference between this one and that one?
This and this?
Yeah.
With the porch.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Closed in years ago.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
The basic house is twenty by twenty.
So you're not adding on any, you're not making, you're just, you're just, you're just converting the insides to make it different? I think you've got another picture, Joe Jamie, or another drawing from it.
I have a three D sketch.
Are you contracting this out or are you doing it yourself or?
Yeah, I'm a friend of the owner, so.
Okay.
Do you want this one or?
Oops, can you go back one?
You want me to go back?
Let's see, existing.
Okay.
Which one, look, Amy.
Okay.
It's the existing roof line. And basically, we're just, you know, moving, building the back wall up and putting in dormers, dormer on there to give a little more room upstairs. It's a one-bedroom upstairs and it's really tiny. It's like twelve feet wide, twenty feet long. So we want, you know, be able to stand up in there and have a little slide glass window looking out over the lake and turning the roof that's over the porch into a deck. It's like eight feet out.
So you're not changing the other side?
No, nothing's changing, no, nothing's gonna extend past the existing house.
What I mean is you have that existing roof line and you're picking that up?
This here.
Yeah.
You're sticking that.
You're not doing it to the other side though, are you?
The front, no, this is, because the front of the house would be that way.
Correct.
Nothing changes from the speed.
Nothing, okay.
You're just staying there, it's just gonna be a shed dormer, side of that roof.
And that deck that when you showed before was on the left, which I assume is, that's still there?
Deck's down here.
Okay.
On the first floor.
And it goes around this way, right?
Goes around this side.
That's, okay, yeah, okay.
This house is actually setback from the two other ones in front.
Okay.
So it's not really, you know, not affecting anybody's view or anybody's, you know, the other houses are way out, closer to the street. So, I mean, I didn't realize we needed to even get a variance or whatever. This is.
A special permit.
Special permit. They're just, you know, taking the roof and moving it up, you know?
Are any of the setbacks changing whatsoever?
No, no, none of them's changing.
No, he's basically just reconfiguring the existing house.
But why does it require a special permit?
Because it's non-conforming, so of course.
Because it doesn't meet the side lot.
Doesn't meet the side lot, so he's still.
Just because he's touching the house. Just because he's touching the house.
No, well, he's doing, he's doing a renovation, but because it's already non-conforming, right? And he doesn't meet the setbacks, he has to get a special permit, huh? Yeah.
He's not touching.
I just don't know if it wasn't affecting the setbacks in any way.
No, it's not affecting.
The setback's not the issue. The issue is.
Because they're non-conforming already, he still has to get a special permit. If they were conforming, he could do it by right. But because they're non-conforming, he has to get a special permit.
The first time in several years that I've actually seen one where we've had no setback change. Usually it's been changes for positive.
Right, yeah, alteration of government non-conforming structure does violate, does violate the setback coverage for high requirements of E one B, but does not violate those to a greater extent than the original structure. The structure may be rebuilt, altered, or enlarged only with special permission issued by the zoning board of appeals. So that's us.
So the fact that it's just being enlarged?
Correct.
Even though it's not being enlarged into the setback?
It's alteration.
Well, it wouldn't even be allowed to be enlarged in any way to the setback.
The triggering thing is the fact that it's pre-existing non-conforming.
Right.
That's the triggering event.
But because he's enlarging the house.
Well, he's not, it's the alteration. He's just, he's actually altering it.
Okay.
He's just, he's doing anything to it. It doesn't matter what he says.
So if you want to put a three-story tower, but let's forget the height restriction, it still would require a special permit.
Yeah, because it's pre-existing non-conforming.
And this is not affecting, this is not violating the height requirement at all?
Nope, nope, he's not changing the height at all. Devin asked as he looked at the roof line.
What about the fact, do we need documented measurements in a different way than this?
You know, again, we're approving a special permit based on zoning. We're not doing a building, we're not, with the building inspector. Okay, we're by the building inspector with the set of plans. I'm sure the building inspector's asked for a set of plans.
Yes.
And engineer plans. We don't need that because we're really looking at.
Anything else on the questionnaire for this, will be the, are the plans properly submitted and everything, if I'm correct?
Is there a questionnaire?
There's no questionnaire for the special permit?
There is questionnaire, but that won't be on there.
Okay.
They won't ask about that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
The actual side overhang, that will stay within the same footprint.
Which is the.
The existing trim on the outside actually gonna stay there and we're building the dormer inside of that.
Okay.
So nothing, the overhangs, the roof, nothing's changing, nothing's getting any bigger.
Got it.
No, that's only for variants, right?
No, special permit has to, but I think he filled one out.
I don't know, I'm looking. Did we get one?
Yeah, he did.
I did that.
He'll let you find it.
It's pretty simple, yeah. All right, so can we have a motion?
Do we, any public comment?
I don't think Donna's commenting on this one, so unless there's somebody else back there hiding, we won't, so. Can we have any, yeah. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? I don't think we close the public hearing yet, do we?
I just have one question before you close the public hearing.
You can ask a question.
It takes about ten days to get the official in writing.
How long do I have to write it up?
Technically, you have like forty days.
Yeah.
Forty days?
Yeah.
I won't take forty days.
I'm curious, you know.
We've gotta write it up. Joe's got a couple to write up. And then he'll, then he'll submit it to Amy, who'll get a stamp for the town clerk. And then there's obviously a twenty-one day appeal period, so.
Takes about a week or so.
Might as well try to write it up within the literature.
You know, if you're nice to Joe, he might do it for a turn. He has a couple of.
It was started two months ago when I found out about this special permit thing, whatever.
I mean, I would assume, look, you probably, to be safe, probably should be looking at July. You know, I think it'd be tough to be, you might be lucky with the third or fourth of June, but look at July probably as your start date maybe. Because you still gotta submit your plans to the building inspector. Have you done that yet?
Pretty much I'll sit there.
Okay.
Right, because that's what I was gonna ask, because that's the question we have here, is that a proper set of plans have been filed with the planning board?
Doesn't need to go to the planning board.
Huh?
Planning board for what?
It's a site plan.
That's a site plan. Right, that question will be positive?
It's not applicable.
It's not applicable?
No. There's no planning board.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we would be looking at that.
Okay.
So it's not applicable.
Although the plans are drawn by me, not an engineer, the, I do have an engineer's letter stating what size of the headers and stuff with it. Because there's some openings that stand inside, you know, so.
And setbacks, Donna?
No?
Nope. I don't know.
Yeah.
Do you really need to spend a thousand dollars to document the engineering?
Have the setbacks documented, is what I'm saying. I mean, he's not changing them, we know that.
Right.
Well, he's stated that the alterations occurring within.
Within current, any.
That's fine. The only thing is, because in the decision.
And your decision will have to say, no, there will be no change to the setbacks.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, which are, you know.
And then we'll identify them. Do you want to re-identify them?
No, I know they are, I know they are. And then we'll do that during the deliberation.
Deliberation, sorry. Okay, I make a motion. Any other thoughts in the clauses?
The right one, yeah. Thirty-nine again, you took away. You got the folder for thirty-nine?
Poor Joe.
No, it's all right.
Twenty-one day appeal period, who, like, neighbors get to appeal it, they don't, they feel the decision is not.
Do you have any enemies in town?
No.
Good. No, it could be, if somebody had an issue with what you're doing, but it sounds like it's gonna be enhancement to the neighborhood, not a distraction.
Right.
I make a motion that we close the hearing for thirty-nine.
Oh, we did. We did also that already.
With this?
We did.
We did.
And there was no public comment. Because Donna doesn't want to comment on that. Donna, would you like to comment on this? No, you're welcome to, Donna. No.
When Martin lived on a different street, I was a neighbor. I just wanted to see him.
Donna Jones!
Donna Jones.
Oh, my gosh!
No comment on the project.
Bill sat in?
No, sit down. You guys can have a whole home move later on. Thanks, thanks a lot. See what you caused? My goodness gracious. We don't want to know what you guys did in sixth grade. Hold on one second.
Okay, hold on.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we close the hearing for thirty-nine Leland Road.
A public hearing?
Public hearing for thirty-nine Leland Road for a special permit, for a special permit to allow the alteration or enlargement of an existing non-conforming structure, which does violate the setback coverage or height requirements of section E one B, but does not violate those requirements to a greater extent than the original structure.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we deliberate this tonight?
I haven't lived in Norfolk for almost forty years. I was born here, but I'm still a townie. When you go be for like the fire department or whatever, stuff I do here. Oh, you're a townie, you're all set. You can't believe it.
All right, now go out and do kumbaya with Donna. All right. Nice seeing you. All right.
Okay.
We, we're not done, folks.
No, no.
At eight o'clock P M, we have eighty-one Pond Street, appeal of the building commissioner's decision. The applicant has asked for a continuance. So, Joe.
Does the staff read it in or no?
Yeah, just read it in.
Okay.
We could probably, we probably don't have.
We're not really opening.
We could just say, so I make a, can we have a motion to continue? I wanted to let you have it.
No, do we have to open it officially?
I think we should open.
We should open the hearings, what she's saying.
We should open it. We can't continue without it.
All right, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Wait till you clock. Wait till you clock?
No, you can, no, it's at seven thirty.
Okay, all right. So notice hereby given in accordance with chapter forty-eight of the Massachusetts general laws and any and all amendments thereto, that a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals in room G seven of the Norfolk zoning, Norfolk municipal building, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, on May first, twenty nineteen for the following application. William J. Baller III at seven thirty P M for appeal of a building commissioner zoning enforcement office's decision in accordance with Massachusetts general law, chapter forty-eight, section eight, for the property addressed as eighty-one Pond Street. Reference assessors map nineteen, block seventy-two, lot twenty-nine in the C one zoning district.
And the applicant has asked for a continuance until June fifth at seven o'clock P M. So could we have a motion to continue?
I make a motion that we continue the applicant eighty-one Pond Street, appeal of the building commission's decision until, until June fifth at?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Room one twenty-four.
Room one twenty-four.
Town hall.
Town hall.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Will you be here?
Could we take a five-minute recess while we organize so we can do some deliberations? Thank you. Okay. Welcome back to the zoning board of appeals meeting for May first. I'd like to remind everybody that this meeting is audio and video recorded for the open meeting laws. As we all know, today is May Day. Does anybody know the meaning of May Day? Let's see how smart you guys are from a trivia standpoint.
It's European.
It's European?
I think it's European, right?
Is it? Why do we say May Day?
I don't remember.
Okay. What about, why do they say May Day when a ship is in distress? Anybody have a clue? That's a field of trivia night.
Maybe we'll do so much better now, I guess, no idea.
Well, you're gonna give us both answers. They will. It was a radio communicator during World War Two, who there's a word in French, meneur. And he sort of took it as May Day. So May Day became the word for help me, which is what it means in French. And that's why we say May Day when their ship is in distress. So there you go.
And the origins of May Day?
That I don't know, but that will be for next meeting.
Oh, my goodness.
I figured I'd give you a little homework. All right, two seventy-three. Let's do our finding of facts first.
Currently a vacant lot.
Correct.
The applicant's own neighboring two sixty-nine.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
And the vacant lot is lots four and five, which will be combined?
It's lot forty-five. It's gonna be called lot forty-five. Have they done with it?
I don't know. Was that a? I don't think that was a title. I think just meant to show lot four and five.
Yeah.
It did look interesting, no.
Oh, you heard that?
That's what I thought she said.
No, I didn't hear that.
Did you hear?
I think it's a combination. Did you hear? Lot forty-five that they're calling?
Yeah, because it's not gonna be lots four and five.
Now, in the assessment map, we don't call it lot four and five, though. It's.
She heard it, I believe. She heard it, I believe her.
Twelve, right, okay, because the assessment map is different than these lots. Okay. Right? Being that it's a special permit or request to have parking space in front, there's fourteen spaces in front of two handicap. Correct?
Fourteen, including two handicap.
Including two handicap, yes.
Correct.
Uh, the applicant also said that they weren't going to cut any trees?
No trees.
But they're going to also promote, who's that, two more business stalls there?
Does it really matter? I don't know if that's, yeah, is there anything that stopped them from having, like, subletting out additional business spaces?
Remember, we're just approving parking in the front.
Did you, did you say there are fourteen, they're requesting fourteen spaces?
Yeah, which includes two.
Two handicap, yeah.
Yep.
They're going to be, there'll be, say again?
You didn't hear me?
Yes. There'll be a display area in front of these parking spaces, which will house used cars and lawn equipment, I guess is the best term.
Right, and that's not us approving?
No, no, but it blocks the, uh, it actually is going to block the spaces from the road.
Okay.
To a great extent.
Which, which may block the spaces.
Sure.
Okay. Did you say all the buildings are within the fifty-foot buffer?
Correct.
Yeah, the building is within the fifty-foot buffer.
Outside.
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 Got it. And it's a proposed ten thousand square foot building.
What by law, the, what by law, the, um.
F seven E.
E.
F seventy.
The fifty-foot buffer is required by Concon, right?
Hmm?
The fifty-foot, the outside, the fifty-foot buffer is required by Concon, right?
Yeah, so.
To be outside the fifty-foot buffer?
Yes.
It was a Concon, right?
They also said, didn't they say they were proposing a post-rail fence?
Yes. Yes, it's on the plans to.
Post-rail fence in front of the display area.
Other fences were standing.
Yes.
Is there, is there criteria for this special permit with the way, uh, I just can't remember, is it the way you do with variance?
No, it's not the same way, no. There was no, um, no public comment. Is there a little bit of questionnaire? Any, any other finding of fact? I think this covers the main, just a bit. This is. I, I could say the site plan approval is before the zoning board.
Before the planning board.
Before the, before the planning board, I'm sorry.
We are the zoning board.
Sorry about that, planning board.
It's a C one, it's in the C one highway, on highway district.
Okay, that, that'll be in the early statements. I'm not getting any.
All right, we'll go through the questionnaire. Use must be in harmony with general purpose intended by law, the proposed commercial building is locating the C one on highway, which permits commercial use. Use is in an appropriate location, is not detrimental to the neighborhood, and does not significantly alter the character of zoning district. Proposed building in use is located in a commercial district and is in keeping with the nature and character of the existing businesses in the area. Development of the vacant parcel will enhance the neighborhood. I think if you've been down there, you can see that it's pretty rough on that side. And this is really becoming our commercial epicenter for Norfolk.
Should we also say that the property to the left side, kind of the northeast side, the sheet has parking in the front of the building?
Yes.
That's a good point.
That is a very good point.
Is that two sixty-nine?
No, that's, that's two seventy, well, yeah, the address is two sixty-nine, but it's lots, um, two and three.
Two and three?
Yes. Currently has.
Existing building, two sixty-nine.
It appears it has, currently has, one, two, three, plus handicap, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and.
I, I still think it was just saying that this part.
Parking in the front of the adjacent building. Right, the proposed use would not be detrimental or offensive to the adjoining zoning districts and neighboring properties due to the effects of lighting, odor, smoke, noise, sore, refuge, visual or other nuisances. Proposed building will be adjacent to other existing commercial buildings and will non-diversely impact the residential butters. Development of the property will improve and enhance the property and will create an attractive addition to the district.
As far as a, one of the conditions of approval, we mentioned that the lighting, because he does have some light poles out there.
It's directed on the. It's the standard condition we have in all of these.
Right, right, okay.
The proposed use would not cause undue traffic congestion in the immediate area, the building will house an existing use, so traffic will be consistent with the existing conditions and there are no traffic congestion expected. We have the proper site plan has been filed with the planning board, the proper number of copies submitted with the application for special permit to the board of appeals. Site plan approval is pending before the planning board, and then the use and/or purposes consist with the nineteen ninety-two master plan. And as most recently updated, proposed development and use will promote and attract commercial business to town, increasing tax revenue. Amy, we should probably, would you check with Rich, the nineteen ninety-two was amended in two thousand and seven?
Right.
And is now over ten years old.
Right.
So I don't know if it's still a valid master plan. Can you check with Rich and find out?
Okay.
Because we keep on citing it, and it may not be applicable any longer because of our, our laws. Okay? Anything else? So we have findings, we have those, the conditions will be our standard, lighting, I think that covers everything.
Did we say it was in the C one on highway?
On highway.
Because it's also in the C one off highway, a portion of the lot.
The only reason I didn't say that was because all the parking that we're approving is in the C one on highways.
Wasn't sure if it was.
By, by, by muddy waters. Okay. I guess you could say it's in both. The, the rear of the property is in the C one off highway district.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you could say the front of the property is on the C one on highway.
I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Got it. Everybody's voice to be heard.
Yeah, perfect. No, these are all good finding of facts.
All right.
Fix the write-up a little easier.
Is that good?
I'm, I'm fine.
All right.
I'll tell you which one I don't want to write out.
So this will be, this will be a special permit to grant, um, F seven E, parking in the front, so it would be a motion to grant it. So, Bob, I'll start with you, motion to grant special permit?
Um, so, yes, to grant.
So what, do we do a so moved on the motion?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if do we.
We should do a so moved on the motion. Did you say the motion?
I didn't, no, it's just going to be your job.
Okay.
It's your job.
All right, give me the thing again.
I was going to make it easy.
Yeah, like you, if you read it all, I would have said so moved.
Go ahead.
Okay. All right, so it's a motion to grant, right?
Correct.
All right. I make a motion that we grant for a special permit, um, for two seventy-three Dedham Street to allow parking located, to be located in the front yard of the proposed commercial building.
I see it.
Okay.
Any discussion? Okay, the vote.
Yes, to grant.
Yes, to grant.
Yes, to grant.
Yes, to grant. Yes, to grant. It's unanimous? All right. Very good.
It's unanimous?
Yeah, it's unanimous.
It's not unanimous.
Unanimous.
It's unanimous.
Unanimous. Where'd you grow?
Isn't that a bush?
Cowenell brown cow grazing in the cool green grass, right?
Not unanimous.
Unanimous. All right, the next one was nine Chestnut Street.
Mm-hmm.
Finding of facts.
Don't touch anything.
Existing structure.
They're expanding the existing structure with porch and garage.
The existing structure seventeen-seven of, uh, off of the main road. Which, and, and the porch is twelve-nine.
Which is the key number. You may want to reference his plan.
Yeah.
And that way you can get the proper setbacks right off the plan, just reference his plan for the proper setbacks.
Proper setbacks, referencing the plan of, what, is it James and Rita Baker, nine Chestnut Road, Norfolk, Mass?
Correct.
Done by G W Site Solutions, Blackstone, Mass?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, signed off by Bruce C. Wilson, three, six, eight, seven, oh.
Great. The new, the addition plus the existing house plus the deck, the porch and the shed will occupy ninety, nineteen percent?
Yep, nineteen point seven.
Nineteen point seven.
Finding of fact is there were no butters at the public hearing. The addition, um, in fact, meets the rear setback.
Re, rear inside.
Inside setbacks.
And its front setback is no greater than, or no more detrimental than what's existing.
Yep.
Got it.
That's it. The height, the height of the second floor will not change? On the existing house?
Well, the height on the new structure won't exceed these.
Won't exceed, right, right, see it, correct. The driveway will be moved, not that it's important for us, but the driveway will be moved to the new garage?
The property has public water?
Correct.
Inseptic, interseptic, located on the, be, on the right side of the house.
Civil.
Westly side.
The civil side.
That's the septic side, right?
Right.
Not where they're putting the.
And the septic is existing, right?
Yes, existing septic. And we didn't ask, but if the current structure, if the septic is, if the current septic is, let's say, a two-bedroom septic and looks like one, two, it's still two-bedroom.
Still two-bedroom.
Doesn't make any.
That's all we had.
But that's a, that's a health department requirement, so we don't have to worry about that.
Correct. We'll go through the criteria, that way if we pick up anything else, we can, we can get it through. The use must be in harmony with general purpose intended by law, the family room and garage addition are allowed uses in the residential zone. Use is appropriate location, is not detrimental to the neighborhood, nor does it significantly alter the character of the zoning district. The addition is located in a lot, so is not to be detrimental to the neighboring site line. Adequate and appropriate facilities will provide for the proper operation of the proposed use, the house is currently serviced by town water and a private septic system. A revised driveway will be installed, and I think we picked that up as a finding of fact, right, Joe?
Yep.
The proposed use would not be detrimental or offensive to adjoining zoning districts and neighboring properties due to the effects of lighting, odor, smoke, noise, sewage, refuge, material, visual, or other nuisance system. The residential use will be continued and dumpster will be on-site during the construction process. I'm sure you'll put a condition in that.
That'll get all the, that'll be involved, any?
No bedrooms are being added to the existing septic system or made in effect.
Okay.
And I think we, I don't know if we said this in the C three district, the R three district?
It's in the, it's in the hearing note, right?
Yeah. The proposed use would not cause undue traffic congestion in the immediate area, the driveway inside garage are adequate for parking and safe access to the roadway. The proposed site plan has been approved with the planning board, the proper number of copies submitted with the application for a special permit to the board of appeals, planning board not required for residential special permit. The use is in harmony, consistent with the nineteen ninety-two master plan, and is most recently updated, and the answer is yes, it is not.
Do we have to make a note of how old the house is, or was built before a certain time period?
Um, no, we just know it's a pre-existing non-conforming.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. Does not ask them for anything that would be pre our bylaws.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any other, um, significant findings of facts or any other concerns? Okay. Joe, would you make a note?
Yes.
Earning your thirty-three dollars tonight.
Yeah, I really am. I make a motion, uh, I make a motion to grant a special permit to allow the alteration or enlargement of the existing non-conforming structure, which does not violate, which does violate the setback coverage or height requirements of section E one B, but does not violate the requirements to a greater extent than the original structure located at nine Chestnut Road.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, this will be a motion to grant special permit for nine Chestnut Street. Bob?
Yes, to grant.
Yes, to grant.
Yes, to grant.
Yes, to grant.
Yes, to grant. The motion passes unanimously.
Unanimously.
I didn't want, I didn't want to give him his, I don't want to give him his, uh.
Non-anonimously.
Non-anonimously.
It's not, it's not, nobody knows who passed it, it's unanimous.
All right. Now we're at the thirty-nine Leland Road.
Can we get this back to you?
There's a last one. All right, finding of facts. Thirty-nine Leland Road.
That's not the roughest set of plans I've ever seen.
Yeah, it's pretty rough, but, uh.
Just on one thing, and again, he's not changing anything, that's why I was with Stan today. I just wasn't even sure, and the scale is so tough, that is that really twelve feet or two feet?
Wow, and he said, I think it says twelve, but we're gonna, you know, why don't we, we should, what I want to do is we'll call this exhibit A, so this will actually be part of it for you.
Okay. As I said, this is the one I want you to write up.
Yeah, this is Mike Brogan's plan, right?
Yeah.
Is it exhibit A? And we'll, and then we'll add to that into the record is the, the existing setbacks of an existing house.
Right.
So that's a finding of fact.
Has, has he said exhibit A?
Is that admissible if it's not stamped by a land surveyor, though?
That was my question.
This is, this is actually, it, it, I would say it's, because he's got to provide, as you know, a full set of plans to the building department. If we say that it will not, it will not, there's no alterations to any of the existing setbacks. And Joe sets those setbacks from this plan, twelve feet, twenty feet, one hundred and six feet, twenty and twelve, then that's what the building department will go by. So I don't think we need to have a land surveyor verify it, because he's telling us these are existing. And, um, and Bob will verify those in the building plan, because he's got to, he's going to have to show them a plan.
Isn't it somewhat irrelevant, though, what they are, the fact is, is that he's not going to expand into.
He's not changing anything.
No, I understand that, but, but if you're referencing that and saying you cannot change it from twenty feet, and it's actually, you know, different from what's on that plan, I, I think that might create a little bit of.
Let's say they find out it's eighteen.
Yeah, that's, that's my point.
Right. Again, I don't thi, we're just, this is our reference, it really doesn't matter. Doesn't matter what, he's still non-conforming, you know, and all, and.
As long as he's not going to exceed any conformity.
As long as he's not going to increase, and we can make that as a finding of fact, there will be no increases to the existing footprint of the house or the, or the porch.
Didn't he say that he had something signed in there by somebody?
No.
No?
Yeah, but it was, I think it was about the actual structure. He was talking about things about the structure.
In the application here, no?
No.
I don't recall.
He was talking about things.
This is the fault, he had the way the house had something.
He didn't know what he was talking about.
He was the one who didn't really know what.
He's talking about engineer.
Yeah.
It's an engineer, sort of engineer, the fact that.
We said, you know, a little more, a little more, this is what it came down to.
You can thumb through the files.
So. Because according to his structure, I include.
Talking about something that's.
No.
I just think the, the finding of fact is the footprint of the house, nor the deck, will be increased.
Right, right. Is that also a condition? In this particular case?
We actually, would actually be.
Add a condition, that's it.
Well, that's the basis of his whole argument.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? He can't increase it.
Right, right.
He's already non-conforming, he can't make it another month.
The only reason I'm saying is that, you know, he, even when he was reading this, he, he said, was that twelve, whatever he said? I'm going by the fact that this is my, this is my best reference to being twelve.
Well, no, well, it's still, I, again, I think it's irrelevant, I don't think it matters. I care if it's twenty or two hundred, it doesn't matter. You know, if he's not conforming, he's not conforming, there's not, there's not going to be more non-conforming, which he's not going to be.
I think he had asked Amy, did he need to get a stamped, enter your stamp on it, and for him to spend that kind of money, you know?
On something that.
Yeah. He's not really, yeah.
He's trying to.
And that's why we said it, you know, it's.
He has to file.
And it would be about a thousand dollars today to really have him come out and survey it again, so it's crazy.
He has to file, he has to file his plan with the, with the building department, right?
Oh, he's got to give them a sort of.
Yeah, so that's it, so that's really it.
So that'll be it.
Right. Well, we have, I don't reference as in, as seen in exhibit A.
Yeah, okay, yeah. And then you make a finding of fact, and it can.
Any condition too, like that. Yeah, it cannot be, it can exceed the existing structure.
Okay.
And he's obviously not going to change the height of the building. He's going to enclose the deck to make it a, I think he says he's going to make it a.
He wasn't?
Not the whole deck. Not the whole, he's going to actually, he's going to raise it to make it a, the deck higher, so that you can have a walkout.
No, 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 there's a, there's a roof there right now.
Or he's going to make that into a deck.
He's going to make that into a deck.
He's going to make the roof into a deck.
Right, right. He shows a little bit of that deck, I don't know if you saw this picture here, he shows a little bit of it right here.
Yeah.
This is the deck on that, where the grill is, that's not changing. The current configuration is called here, where this says wood deck.
Right.
That's, nothing's happening there.
He's gonna put a roof on it.
Not there.
No.
No, he's putting a roof, he's putting a roof on this section.
Right.
This is not the deck.
He's bumping up the dorm and he's gonna turn, he's gonna turn a roof into a deck.
The roof is slanted in the back, he's raising that.
Yeah.
To make that a dormer. Right, so he's not changing anything as far as the roof line, right?
The roof line, he's basically the same.
On the front, the back's gonna be a dormer, so there will be a roof on the back, which Joe just said.
What he didn't do, which would have made it easier?
Well, here it is, he's raising this roof from this level to that level.
Yeah, he's doing it up.
But what he didn't include here, which would have made it easier, had he included that area right there, which is currently a ground level deck.
He actually, I think that's what he was trying to do here, but he didn't actually was...
No, no, you're, you're looking...
No, I know, I know it should be on that side, but look at the way he did this, I actually assumed that's what he was trying to do, but he transposed it the wrong way, so he actually got a mirror image of it. I thought that's what he was trying to show was that his deck actually went on the house on this side, but it doesn't matter. Yeah.
But this...
I said, I think he was trying to do it, but he just didn't have to draw it out.
But is there currently a basement in the first floor there now? It says basement, we didn't ask, we didn't ask any questions about...
Right, right.
About how, if that's a basement or a crawl space.
But it's clearly on that, that hand drawing.
Right.
It says basement, first floor, so this is...
But that's existing.
Right.
Right, and there's this deck area that's above the first floor.
No, 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 the, the, so the roof of the first floor is going to become a deck. There is already a present deck on the first floor, not above the first floor.
We shouldn't be talking...
It's above the basement line and above the first floor.
Correct.
He's not touching that at all. Okay? What he's going to make a deck is this section here where it says BASFBM eight. That area, when he bumps out...
It's a closed in porch area now.
When he bumps in out this, okay? And he's going to enclose this area here, and then it's going to be a deck on top of that. And he's going to have a shed dormer right here.
Correct.
So...
So is he creating, is he creating a first floor there?
It, it's currently a first floor.
Okay. That walks out onto, onto a deck now?
Onto a deck, yes, okay, okay.
Right.
But that first floor is screened or it's, it's free season.
They closed enough... He's got, he's got, he's got a shed dormer right here, he's actually, he's got a shed dormer, he's gonna make it, he's actually gonna make it a flat roof. Then when he adds his shed dormer on the main house, he's gonna put sliders in, and that way it will leave the, what's existing already, which is the first floor. So he's all, he's actually raising, he's actually, he's raising his little shed dormer up to make it flat so that this works. Putting a deck on it, but he'll still have, and then he'll have this little bit of deck that's there already.
Okay.
Okay? Not very well drawn, but...
No, in order to, it's a little different.
The fact he's not changing anything of the existing footprint is what we have to be concerned with.
He's gotta have a good set of plans, I guess, to get that approved.
Yeah.
Didn't he also say that the view from the front with the street side was not changing?
Not changing at all?
Yeah, same.
He also said he wasn't going to be obstructing anybody's views, I don't know if that's...
His what?
He was not going to be obstructing anybody's views
Right.
of the lake, I guess.
Right. And there was no public comment with regard to it?
Leland, which lake is that?
Highland, I think he said Highland's behind him, didn't he? Highland, what did I say? Not Highland, what's it called?
Populatic, not Kingsbury.
No, Kingsbury's behind him, he said.
Kingsbury, okay.
Yeah, Kingsbury. Thank you.
Yes, Leland, okay.
Right.
We didn't ask you anything about the septic rating, right, probably?
We don't, because again, it wouldn't matter to us, there's nothing, right, nothing's changed. Yeah, he actually, he does do a better job here. See what he shows here. So there's the future dormer, which is basically bumping up the back. And there's the future deck which was taking that little room he actually has off the back, which is now a shed dormer.
Right.
Making that a deck.
Right.
And then the existing deck that's there still stays the same.
And he walks out onto it from that first floor.
So he's bumping up a shed dormer that's in the rear now, and then he's adding a shed dormer.
He didn't draw this.
Say again?
He didn't draw this, this is part of it.
No, oh no, well, he...
He did that, he wrote that in.
He noted it, he noted it. He did the minim, he did the minimalist, right?
Are there setbacks in there? Are there any setbacks in those? Are there any setbacks in these, these numbers here?
No, no.
Okay.
And again, he's not changing anything, so...
Well, instead of presenting, we could get a bunch of hand drawing applications in the future.
Yeah, I mean, we're giving him a little bit of a pass because obviously...
A former townie, right? Former townie.
Former townie, get a break, right? No, I think it's, the fact that he's not adding on to it, I think is the most important part. And he will not be changing the existing footprint of the house. Do you agree?
I agree.
I agree as well.
Mm-hmm. Oh, we go through the conditions?
We didn't read his...
I don't think he had a...
He had a...
I think he had page two. Is it there?
Yes, here.
It's the third page of the application.
Yeah, I didn't find it before I told you that.
No, we, we saw it, we had it during...
I know you did.
The fourth page of the application.
This is, this is one of the short and sweet answers here.
This is, this is one of those, this is, this is, this is, he put a lot of time into this, get ready. The use must be in harmony with the general purpose intended by law.
It is.
Will be in harmony, enlarging bedroom. The use is in appropriate location, not detrimental to the neighborhood and does not significantly alter the character of the zoning district. Cute little dormer on Old Lake Cam. Gives it some flair, doesn't it? It's probably the best, that's probably the best answer too we've seen in a long time.
Is cute interpretive?
Cute little dormer, cute little dormer.
I guess I'll be, I'll be adding some finding of facts into those answers.
Yeah, it's cute little dormer. Adequate and appropriate facilities will provide for the proper operation of the proposed use, not applicable. There you go, how do you like that one? Because he's not changing anything. The proposed use will not be detrimental or offensive to the adjoining zoning district and neighborhood due to the effects of lighting, odor, smoke, noise, surge, visual, visual or other nuisance. Single, single woman, no kids, no noise. And I think we noted that he's not obstructing any of the neighbors' views.
Still being used for residential purposes.
The proposed use would not cause undue traffic congestion in the immediate area, no change. The proper site plans have it filed with the planning board. Obviously, this doesn't require site, but it doesn't require planning board approval, so it's not applicable. And the use and purpose consists with the 1992 master plan, as most recently updated, he said staying, staying single family. So, you know, do we, you know, we've always read these after we've closed the public hearing, why don't we, I think we should read these.
We sometimes, we sometimes have the applicant read those with us.
Can we read these during the public hearing?
We should do that.
I think we should.
I have to, we haven't done that.
I mean, not that he did anything wrong, but it would have helped with the cute little dormer on Old Lake.
Yeah, yeah. That is something we've forgotten to have done in a while, because we haven't had a lot of these, but then we've done time.
We should, maybe we'll do it during the public hearing and not do it after. Just so we can listen to cute little dormer.
So, so if you want to offload me, I'll let you write this one up.
Yeah.
She was a little... You didn't say yes either.
Sure, alright. Go ahead, can we have a motion to grant this special permit?
I make a motion that we grant the special permit to allow the alteration or enlargement of an exist, of an existing non-conforming structure which does violate the setback coverage or height requirements of section E1B, but does not violate those requirements to a greater extent than the original structure for the property located at thirty-nine Leland Road.
It was seconded motion. Any further discussion? Okay, this is a motion to grant special permit, Bob?
Yes to grant.
Joe?
Yes to grant.
Yes to grant.
Yes to grant.
Yes to grant. Very good, you're okay.
Approved minutes.
Now we have some minutes to approve. Is Don here for these minutes, let's look at them. Ah, you added...
Young Clay is in here.
And, and look at the first sentence.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Recused himself from the hearing. Wonder what time that was, there's no time on that.
He's still going to follow up on the lighting for, you know, for the supervision for lighting infrastructure for the Village Green? And I'm just looking at, we discussed that, the lighting that might be Village Green and Cleveland Street?
For the Young Clay?
Yes.
Right.
It says that you'll evaluate, you'll, you'll say. Said you will evaluate the area in the core back, the lights that people buy.
Yeah, I think he actually went out there and said, you know, there's a light on the corner.
Right.
And there's a light on Cleveland, so he felt, he felt that was sufficient, so...
Yeah, I'm just in favor of making sure as, as things continue, we can continue to make sure the lights are on intersection and, you know, curmice type of thing, that ends. As should be just a general practice. And the lights that have been out for three months have to come back on. There've been a lot of lights out this winter.
I see, Bob, next week I will tell, get it on.
Well, I think the key is someone's going to have to go out and, someone's going to have to go out at night and start making notes about which ones are out, because...
There are a lot.
Yeah, and I saw an email that said that we have to provide the address that the light is next to. And sometimes it's difficult to stop and take the addresses in the middle of the night. But I know which ones are out.
We have a motion to approve the March sixth, two thousand nineteen notice.
I think the motion that we approve the minutes for March sixth.
Second.
So, the Board of Appeals.
Second.
Is that yet second?
Yes, second.
That was given seven. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And a motion to, um, do we have to grab any new business? The only thing I will mention is that, I don't know, I don't know if you actually got a copy, I didn't see anything, I don't think, is that DEP has required, required MABIT, who is the, was the LSP of record prior to the purchase and sale expiring. They have required MABIT to release all the testing data with regard to Abbeyville. So they have to, they'll be providing that, he has to, they've asked to put it together, and I assume in our next hearing, they will probably update us on what they've submitted, if anything, or what they have to submit, so...
Will that be released per the PIP process or outside of the PIP process?
It probably will be, it'll probably be both, they didn't really require it through the PIP, but they'll probably do it through our meeting as well as through the PIP process. But, and the developer is pleased at this because obviously the information will get out there and then we can move forward from there. But currently doesn't have a, a purchase and sale with the owner of the property, but they did require that. So we will be getting some more data, port of health logs, so you have a chance to look at it. And the PIP will obviously address it as well. So, that's good news that, to move forward on that.
So, the next meeting though, we're going to have, Abbeyville's going to be there?
Right, it's twenty second of Abbeyville, right? Twenty second of Abbeyville. I think that's all we have on the twenty second, and now is Abbeyville.
Which could easily be continued.
It could be, if there's not any, if the MABIT has not put together their information or if there's no changes, they may ask to...
What does that do to extending the period for the application for the 40B?